Thank you for coming. Okay, please have a seat. Take your seats. We're gonna get started.
Judith. Judith.
We got Judith Christensen? Oh, there she is. Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and go on to item number twenty-two, which is major subdivision Point Martin with residential subdivision. Who's presenting on this? Michael, go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This is an application for a major subdivision. The City Council's previously looked at this item as part of the rezoning process that took place a couple of years ago, and this is the major subdivision map that's associated with that. This project's commonly known as the Point Martin subdivision. The project site is located generally south-southwest of the intersection of Steve Quarterway and Farrier Place in the city's Bay Shore neighborhood, and this map shows the location of the site in yellow. These slides are photographs of the project site. This is looking south from Steve Quarterway. Site's up on a small ridge at the, again, at the end of Steve Quarterway. This photograph is looking west from Farrier Place. Again, the site's up on the hill to the left. So while we're on this slide, we'll go ahead and orient the council to the proposal. Essentially, a public street would be continued from this point here, and generally in this location. And then a private, a private street would be constructed to provide access to the residential lots, generally at this location. These are some photographs to provide the council with some context of the single-family nature of the area. The proposal is itself single-family detached homes. Summit Ridge subdivision, of course, lies to the east of the project site. So the photograph that I'd stopped on before was taken at Farrier Place, looking to the west. This is the public street that I mentioned here. And then a private street would be constructed at this location, providing access to the sixteen lots that are proposed. Automobile access, of course, is provided in this private street, and then provides access into, in a courtyard configuration, to the units that are located here. This is the actual map that the council would be acting upon. This is just a close-up image of that. There's guest parking provided at this location here. The private road, as well as the maintenance of the hillside, and all of the utilities that would be owned by the HOA would be, yes, controlled, maintained by a homeowners association. Access from these lots is provided directly to Martin Street. The balance of the lots are provided access by the private road.
I have a question.
Yes.
The part between seven and eight there?
Mm-hmm.
It's not the width of a road, so how much like a regular street is it?
Oh, it's more like a private driveway.
Oh, okay.
In its width.
But it's big enough for, like, say, a fire truck to get in there if it needed to?
It's probably not big enough for a fire truck to get into, but it's private for the private automobile, right.
Yeah, okay.
Fire apparatus could access this road and fight fire and provide emergency response from this road, but probably not likely in this. It'd be hard to back out of. This is the lotting and easement plan, generally showing what parcels are commonly owned by the HOA. This is just an overview of what's proposed. Sixteen lots, size seventeen, or one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight square feet to two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven square feet, one dwelling per lot. The proposal falls within the allowable density. There are four parking spaces provided on each lot, except lot six and seven, which provide three spaces. There are four guest parking spaces. There are sixty-six parking spaces total, fulfilling the mandated minimum in the planned development zoning. There was previously a negative declaration that the City Council adopted for this project, and this is being used to fulfill the SEQA requirement for tonight's subdivision proposal. The Planning Commission's recommending that the City Council adopt the findings from the environmental assessment, which is, of course, relying on the previous negative declaration, and approve the major subdivisions subject to the conditions of approval outlined in the staff report. If there's any questions, the staff's available, as well as the applicant is available.
Any questions? I think we should adopt the resolution. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Can we get a roll call?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Canapa?
Aye.
Mr. Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buen Ventura?
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Let me go into public hearings, item number twenty-three, which is the introduction of an ordinance adding chapter nine point two-five regarding limits on solicitation.
Meeting council members, mayor. So, as of now, as a police department, we have
Nothing.
no current way of, or no options when dealing with persons who are soliciting in an aggressive manner or soliciting in certain areas of the city. So what that looks like, or how it translates out on the street, is a member of our community could call the police department. They'd get ahold of a dispatcher, and they'd say something like, "There's a person standing in front of my business, soliciting in an aggressive manner and chasing customers away from my business." So a police officer would respond out on scene, could contact the person, could ask them to stop doing what they're doing and ask them to move away, but that would be the end of it. There are no other tools that we have legally. So this ordinance sort of draws a gap for us, or closes it a little bit, so that same officer could come out on scene, and if necessary, the person refuses to move, there's an issue. The officer could cite them.
I've got a question. So, I don't know if it's my perception, but I've seen a lot of homeless, the increase in homeless in Daly City. What's the driver for that?
For homeless?
Yeah.
San Francisco.
Yeah, I'm not really sure.
So, let me help you. It's my understanding that because of the Super Bowl, that there's been a lot more enforcement in San Francisco. And so, for example, when I'm on Mission Street, or if I'm over by Mission, by the luckies there, I see a lot more homeless. So are you going to more calls? Or, no, are the calls the same as they were two years ago, three years ago, or? What's, I mean, you're asking us-
For homeless, or, so this isn't really directed at the homeless. This is more directed towards folks who are soliciting in aggressive manner. Now, obviously, some of those folks may be homeless, but that's not-
And so where are, so where are they soliciting? Are they soliciting on the median?
Some people on the median are going towards vehicles. Some people are at Starbucks in Westlake. We get complaints. McDonald's on Geneva. There's several different locations that folks call us.
And you've seen an increase in that, and that's why this legislation is necessary, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
When you issue them a citation, is it for an infraction or a misdemeanor?
It would be an infraction.
And who was prosecuted, who would be prosecuting? Would be the district attorney? Do you go to, you still go to court for it, or you just traffic ticket, what?
So it would go through the city attorney's office.
Okay.
And it would go to Rose or Kelly.
I see.
And they would process it.
It's essentially processed like a parking ticket, but it can be charged, you know, with a formal complaint, but it's no probation or anything like that, so it's essentially like a parking ticket.
Okay. And then, just in practicality, is it usually, what you plan on doing is you just give them a warning first, or, and then, okay?
Yes, sir. Ideally, what we'd like to do is, just like anything else, come along and say, "Excuse me," and sort of move along. But if somebody doesn't move, then we sort of need something that we can enforce with.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I have a question. What is the penalty for an infraction specifically? What happens to the person?
It's, usually, it's a fine of some sort.
And?
Fines are set usually by the court.
And I'm assuming that a number of these people, the reason they're panhandling is because they don't have money, so they don't pay the fine, and then what happens?
Then it could go to a warrant, like any other-
Okay, after, maybe twice, and then what happens?
Well, essentially, if they're charged with infraction, it's like a criminal case. But it's an infraction, so there isn't a jail penalty associated with it. So, in essence, if they don't pay the penalty, technically, they'd be in contempt of court, which can be a court judgment, or, like Lieutenant Musman had indicated, it could be a warrant, which can be a warrant for their arrest.
What do we have on the books now?
We don't have anything on the books locally, so essentially, what they do is they just enforce the penal code and have it subject to the district attorney's office, so-
Then they don't charge.
Most of the time, they won't charge.
And so that, what you can only do now is charge someone with an assault, if they touch somebody or something.
Sure, that's if it gets to an extreme.
Yeah, yeah.
Then if there's a violation of the penal code, then the officer can do something.
Right. So this is sort of a preliminary to that, and it fills a gap where there's been nothing.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
One last question.
Because we definitely like to see an intervention before people get so far along that they're hitting people.
And that's a good point. What sort of resources do, I know when domestic violence, we refer people to CORA. What do we do in terms of someone wants help, they're homeless, or they're looking to get connected with resources? What do the officers train to do?
So, we need to pick up training in that area. That's part of, certainly, something we need to get into, but there are several options. We have pamphlets that we put together that have a guide to every, if we're talking about the homeless, or somebody that doesn't have a place to sleep, or they can't get a meal, it has a list of phone numbers and locations in San Mateo County that they can go to.
And so what you've done, and let me say, you've done a great job doing this, because I've actually heard you speak on this at one of the neighborhood associations, but you connect them with resources.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'm gonna open the public hearing on this item. I have no speaker cards, so we get a motion to-
Close the public hearing.
Motion and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, can I get a motion for a city attorney to read by title only?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Daly City, adding chapter nine point two-five, limits on solicitation.
I'll defer.
Okay, anyone?
I'll introduce it.
Mr. Torres?
Yeah.
Torres introduces the ordinance. I'm gonna go down to item number twenty-four, which is zone change and major subdivision, planned development amendment to allow a seven-eleven lot subdivision at fifty-five Calgary Street, and amended development against.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a request to amend an existing planned development zone and grant subdivision approval and amend an existing development agreement at fifty-five Calgary Street. We call this the Calgary Street subdivision. The project consists of essentially three elements. The request is to amend the development standards contained within the existing planned development zoning, approve a major subdivision, subdividing one parcel into seven lots, resulting in a density of twelve, twenty-five dwellings to the acre, and amend a development agreement. The project site is located in, again, in the Bay Shore, the city's Bay Shore neighborhood, orient the council members. This is Geneva Avenue. This is Rio Verde Street, and this is Calgary Street. The planned development zoning actually covered lots one through four. As many of the council members are, I'm sure, familiar, there was a seventy-two unit condominium building constructed here, and that's what we see. There are two vacant lots that are not part of this request. They're located here, or they're, yeah. And then there's lot four, and that's where the subject proposal is, to subdivide into seven lots. Here's a photograph of the site, looking toward the southeast, from Calgary Street. This is the seventy-two unit condominium building constructed behind it. There are a number of utilities that existed, or that presently exist in the frontages of these lots, and so the staff and the applicant have done quite, or had quite a bit of conversation about the potential homes that would be constructed upon these lots. The application does not currently include the home designs, but ultimately, the design review committee would be taking a look at the home construction that would occur on these lots, and it's likely that some of the homes would include a single-loaded garage and driveway to avoid existing power poles that are located here. It's just one thing to point out to the council members there. The proposed zone change is specifically to amend the development standards that apply to lot four that had previously shown in the overhead slide. Currently, six lots are permitted. The request is to amend that to seven lots on Calgary Street. The current minimum lot width is twenty-nine feet, and the request is to provide a minimum lot width of twenty-five feet. And then the lot coverage would be increased from fifty-five percent to seventy-two percent. And the, at this lot width, at the twenty-five-foot lot width, the lots would match all of the existing homes that are on Calgary Street. So the development pattern would be essentially what we see there, of course, providing more parking than most of the homes on the street. Minimum rear setbacks of twenty feet, increased from ten feet. Zero side yard setbacks are proposed, eliminating the four-foot side yard requirement. Again, all of the homes on Calgary Street presently provide zero setbacks. It's a fairly typical development pattern in this part of the city. Front yard setbacks of fifteen feet and a building height of thirty feet, per the R1 zoning standard. So this would be unchanged in the existing planned development zone. Again, the major subdivision calls for a subdivision of seven residential lots, twenty-five feet wide, seventy feet deep, one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet of lot area. This is somewhat reduced from the existing twenty-five hundred square foot minimum contained in the zoning ordinance, but it is a planned development zone, and the council does have the authority to grant a reduced lot size. And this is the subdivision map that actually shows the lots. And here are the proposed seven lots in the yellow outline. Closer look. Part of the request is to amend an existing development agreement. The Planning Commission has determined that the development agreement amendment is consistent with the city's general plan, as required by state law. The amendment is required to reflect changes to the project approved on the development site in two thousand and five. That's the seventy-two unit condominium building, and resolve outstanding issues between the applicant and the city, including affordable housing payment. Copy of the amended development agreement was attached to the council staff report. The city staff is relying on the mitigated negative declaration that was adopted when the City Council granted rezoning approval in two thousand and four, which decreased the number of condominiums from eighty-seven to seventy-two. Actually, it was an apartment project at eighty-seven units, and was reduced to seventy-two condominium units. The Planning Commission is recommending that the City Council adopt the finding here, the findings identified in the staff report, affirm that the previously certified mitigated negative declaration and the monitoring report adequately address the requirements of SEQA, approve the zone change and major subdivision as described in the staff presentation, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report, and approve the amendments to the development agreement that are, again, attached to the council report. If there's any questions, city staff can answer those, as well as the applicants are also here tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
With seventy-two percentage lot coverage in a smaller lot, how big is that backyard?
It's gonna be pretty small, but there's a minimum of the twenty-foot that's back there, so.
So it's twenty by twenty-five?
It would be twenty by twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it's about the size of a two-car garage.
Mm-hmm. That's a good way to look at it.
I find it amusing that the person who was presenting this, actually a former Daly City employee, when asked why he wanted to change from six lots to seven lots, his answer was, "So it would match the rest of the neighborhood." I'm not buying it. It's about money. If you're selling a single-family home, and you've got six of them, and you can squeeze another one in there, that's more money. And so I just thought that was a little unusual, that that would be the ploy, especially in front of, you know, a council that's done this for years. So, the parking situation, it's fifteen, is there gonna be room in that driveway, whether it's city land or personal land, to park a car, not in the garage?
Yes, and that's one of the things that we've worked on, making sure that they, we've actually had conversations with the, as a matter of fact, the architects present tonight. We've had preliminary conversations to make sure that that driveway length is long enough.
Yeah.
We don't want cars hanging over into the city sidewalk, and it's an impolite.
Plus, anyone who buys those homes will be so appreciative of that extra parking spot. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one, if I may, Mayor. With seventy-two percent lot coverage, can you remind me, how high can they go on the development? How high can it be?
In terms of the building height, we'd allow a thirty-foot height limit.
Is that consistent with the neighborhood, too?
It's a three-story building. Most of the, most of the residential in that area are two-story. But we do allow three stories throughout the city. The building, the condo buildings, a fairly tall building, so it could be looked at as sort of a transition to the smaller two stories that exist to the north of the site.
All right. Let me open the public hearing on this issue. We have no speaker cards. Can I get a motion to-
Move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Canapa?
Aye.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Buen Ventura?
Aye. I get a motion for the city attorney to read ordinance by title only.
We have two separate ordinances for this item. The first is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Daly City, amending the Daly City zoning map by amending ordinance number thirteen zero three regarding planned development standards for PD fifty-eight. The second ordinance is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Daly City, approving and authorizing the third amended and restated development agreement between the City of Daly City and Al Baldini and Otto Pazian dated June eighth, two thousand and four.
Great. Who wants to introduce this ordinance? Mr. Canapa introduces this ordinance. Item number twenty-five, which is the zoning text amendment, amendments to zoning ordinance related to condominiums and condominium conver- conversions. Versions. Go ahead. Thank you, Honorable-
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This is a request by John Britton to amend the text in the city's zoning ordinance to reduce the minimum number of condominiums that are allowed within a development project. And I will go through the specifics of that request. So currently, the city's zoning ordinance only allows projects with twenty or more condominium units in it. So this is somewhat constraining when applicants bring to a smaller projects that they'd like to have condominiums. We say, "Well, actually, they need to be duplexes or apartments," and that's quite often somewhat of an issue in developers choosing, you know, possibly not to construct the project. And so with regard to Mr. Britton, he has proposed, he actually has received approval for, in the past, a set of duplexes on Edgeworth Street, and we'll go through what those look like in a second. But that's the background and why he's made this application, is that he'd like to make those condominiums and not have them be duplexes. He'd like to sell the units. So, unrelated to his specific request, the city, when it, the City Council, when it adopted the city's general plan and the housing element, did include a policy that we would actually pursue such a, pursue such a change to the zoning ordinance, reducing the minimum number of condominiums while increasing the number of units necessary for a condominium conversion. And so it's a two-part sort of a proposal. While we're allowing the construction of new condominiums to flourish, we're protecting, if you will, the existing rental housing, the existing apartment housing stock from conversion to condominiums. And so that was the thought. That was the trade-off that sort of we made in that policy decision back when the housing element was adopted. So, and the text at the bottom of the screen essentially provides the council with the task in the city's housing element. So with respect to the condominium proposal, we're not suggesting the City Council, or requesting the City Council act on this proposal. We wanted to give some background of what the townhouse project would look like. This would come back to the Planning Commission and City Council at a future date for action on the subdivision, as well as on the design of the units. The city's Sullivan Corridor Committee has reviewed both of the condominium proposal, as well as the text changes that are before the council specifically tonight, and has recommended approval of both. And that occurred back in January, that council committee. So these are the details and the strikeout and underline, if you will, of the zoning ordinance text. The proposal is that there would be no minimum on the number of units required for new condominium projects. So currently, there's twenty, and that's, of course, stricken out. But then the second part of it is that the minimum number of existing units to convert from rental to condominium would increase to forty. And there's no current minimum now, so that's something that's new, and again, to protect the existing apartment housing stock.
I guess I'm not getting it. How does that protect? It just means a bigger apartment building could turn into condominiums.
Well, actually, but a lot of the buildings in Daly City are beneath the thirty threshold, or the forty threshold. So it actually does protect a considerable number of apartment buildings in the city. We couldn't give you a great statistic on that, but quite a number of the, especially in the older parts of the city, a lot of the buildings fall beneath the forty threshold, and so-
But if Westlake Apartments decided they wanted to go condo-
That's true. They could.
That'd take out, what, way over half the rental property in the whole city?
That's true. That's true.
I have another question, too. It says, "New, new structures could go condo." Does that all- Does that all also mean that a structure that's already built that's being rehabbed or some, you know, a new use or something? Because I'm thinking about people trying to get into the homeownership market.
Sure. That's what the idea is.
I mean, they're desperate. So something that would be like a duplex or even an in-law apartment or something, is there the possibility of those going condos? So it would be a tenants-in-common sort of situation?
Not the second unit, not the in-law unit.
Because of the size.
Right. Yeah, this doesn't allow the conversion of second units for condominium purposes. This is only allowed, and the answer to the duplex question is yes. So this would be...
Duplex could.
A duplex could, for new construction, yes, but not conversion.
A bigger pardon?
The construction of a new duplex would qualify, because, of course, you need to have forty units to convert.
Yeah.
Two less than forty.
Okay. Any other questions?
There's just one last piece of it. And that is that the vacancy rate needs to be five percent or more to allow for the condominium conversion. So this would a bit speak to the conversion of, say, Westlake Apartments, just to pick an apartment owner. If the vacancy rate in Daly City was, it would have to be more, which it very rarely... It's, well, it hovers between one and two percent.
That's what I was thinking.
So it's a, yeah, it's a fairly restrictive on conversion.
When you have people walking along the street and seeing you out gardening and saying, "Do you have a place to rent?"
Right. So we've done quite a bit of research, and the five percent rule has been employed in other municipalities. So it is something that we do think is supportable, of course, recommend it. This is, proposal is exempt from the Environmental Quality, California Environmental Quality Act. It has no potential for significant impacts to the environment. The Planning Commission is recommending that the city council adopt the zone text amendment and, as opposed.
Question. Michael, I'm concerned about the, just to echo what Ms. Christensen said about our rental stock. Is there, make me feel at ease here, if we approve this tonight, it's not like a lot of people are gonna convert, right? Is that...
No. No, in fact, well, it should be said that we've received very few applications for converting over time. And no, the ordinance itself wouldn't cause any type of conversion. In fact, it would make it harder to convert existing apartment buildings.
In the future, can you keep us updated on the progress of this legislation and what the impacts are? Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
We can do that. We'll let you know.
If there are any.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Let me open the public hearing on this issue. I don't have any speaker cards.
Move to close the public hearing.
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion for the city attorney to read by title?
So moved.
Second.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Daly City amending chapter seventeen point three seven of the municipal code regarding condominiums and condominium conversions.
Introduce the ordinance.
Do it.
Okay, Ms. Christensen. All right, item number twenty-six, which is an ordinance to amending Daly City Municipal Code, chapter nine point four-four, minors in pool halls and pinball machines.
I'll make the presentation on the introduction. This is an introduction of the ordinance to chapter nine point four-four. This ordinance is in regards to minors in pool halls and pinball machines. The recommendation for amendment is to maintain its consistency with the amusement device ordinance that the council previously amended in that the ordinance would allow for minors to operate pinballs and be around pinball machines past ten P.M. as long as they are accompanied by a parent, guardian, or other responsible adult. This ordinance was adopted in nineteen eighty-one and has not had any revision since. So we are applying it to more contemporary standards at this point.
All right, any questions? Let me open the public hearing on this item. I don't have any speaker cards.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion for city attorney to read by title on the...
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Daly City repealing and replacing chapter nine point four-four of the Daly City Municipal Code regarding minors in pool halls, pinball machines.
Which council member would like to introduce this? Anyone? Mr. Gangona?
Yeah, why not?
Mr. Gangona introduces this ordinance. Let me go on to item number twenty-seven, which is the second reading of ordinance thirteen ninety-four amending chapter two point two zero of the municipal code, changing the meeting time of the recreation commission.
This is the second reading. It came before the council at the last regularly scheduled agenda, and this ordinance is up for adoption.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes, and let these poor people come at seven.
Mr. Canapa?
Whatever Ms. Christensen said, aye.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. All right, thank you for that. Let me go on to item number twenty-eight, which is the second reading, ordinance thirteen ninety-five amending chapter eight point three-six and eight point five-four of the municipal code regarding regulation of smoking.
This item is also up for adoption. This is the second reading that came before the city council at the last regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Canapa?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Thank you. Item number twenty-nine, the second reading of the ordinance thirteen ninety-six amending chapter five point five-six of the municipal code regarding amusement devices.
This item is also up for adoption, the second reading. This item became, came before the city council for introduction and is before the council for adoption.
Move to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Canapa?
Aye.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye. Thank you very much. I'm now into the public appearances, oral communications. I have five speaker cards. The first one up is Commissioner Ray Satorre. Mr. Satorre, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good to see you.
I waited for more than two hours and a half, Your Honor. And as my professor would say, the greater knowledge we acquire, the greater ignorance unfolds. Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for giving this. I do not want to miss this opportunity, because it's been a long time, it's an overdue, to recognize a remarkable woman. And I would like to recognize the city manager, Pat Martell, for being, I would say, the horizon, it's not only he is city manager, but as the manager, International City Manager Association of America. And what touched me is that this remarkable woman, a quintessential woman for not only here in Daly City, but she went to choose the Philippines to promote the so-called search, which is strengthening the urban resiliency, growth, and equity. To me, it signifies greatness to a lady, because choosing a city, they bring along, we call it, bring home the bacon, the forty-nine million dollars to the six cities in the Philippines, which is great to all of us. She did recognition. I'm pretty sure that most of those who have roots in the Philippines, like Rose, Mike, and Ray, will give her the highest in common on this, because this is a recognition of her effort, crossing across the ocean seas just to give the so-called recognition to the Filipino people here in the Philippines and coordinating with the U.S. Embassy, coordinating with the mission, chief of mission, just to give the so-called, it amounts to about three billion pesos just to serve. In fact, there was a time that I even compared her to Eleanor Roosevelt one time. Why? Because at the time when FDR was having a balancing, Eleanor Roosevelt was doing the, all the memorandum, all the letters signed by Franklin Delano Roosevelt in time of depression and in time of the so-called war in the European Chamber, while everybody were sleeping, just like Pat.
If you could wrap it up here.
Yeah, just finish this. Anyway, I waited for more than two hours.
I know.
Just, just to finish this. Anyway, the recognition is just for once, and it will not happen again, probably. But we will recognize her in the proper time, in our place. And to us, she burned the midnight oil just to say to it that in the city of Daly City, she was doing her job. To me, words are not enough. But anyway, I would say that rhetorics or lip service is not her cap. It is the measure of the best of her energy to give her best. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for giving this opportunity. Congratulations to Pat Martell.
Thank you, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanne Franci? Is it Franci or Franky?
Frankie.
Frankie, sorry.
My name is Joanne Frankie, and I have lived in my ceremony home for forty-two years. In order to protect the quality of our residential neighborhoods, I am here tonight to ask the city to clearly define and enforce the laws regarding short-term rentals, specifically Airbnb. There is a house on my block that is listed on Airbnb. No one lives there. Instead, it acts as a hotel rather than a home. I have printed photos of the listing for the council to review. Because there is not a consistent tenant and the property is not properly managed, garbage was never collected, bags of garbage stacked up outside for weeks. Blackbirds went through the bags, causing trash to spread through the street and onto other neighbors' properties. This rental has attracted renters bringing their mobile homes to be parked on the street. People have rented the property to throw parties, creating noise at night and causing parking problems. One way to help with burglary prevention is to know your neighbors and to look out for each other. Because there is not a consistent tenant, I don't know who my neighbors are. There is a different neighbor every day. At this time, I know of only one Airbnb on my block. What happens when my entire block becomes a hotel row? I'm asking the city for help to turn our neighborhood back into a community and put a stop to these daily rentals. And I have these, if you want to see what they posted, how they set it up like bedrooms, it looks like hotels.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jim Felphy, you're here to speak on that, too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
My name is Jim Felphy. I live in Hanford Avenue in Daly City. I am here to talk about Airbnb also at ninety-five Hanford Avenue. They just opened up about two months ago. Since it has opened up, there has been trash problem. The garbage can have left outside for the first six weeks, which they were always overflowing. The crows would pick up, picking apart, and the garbage was all over the neighborhood. Two weeks ago, I talked to Patricia Duffy, who came out to inspect the grounds. Since then, thanks to her, she made some calls, and now the cans are in the garage. But when the cans are put out for pickup that night, before they, they are also overflowing, and the birds are still at it. Two Fridays ago, there were about six to eight guys who rented the place for a night. The week before that, there was a big camper with about ten guys for a night. The week before that, there was a wedding party. Besides that, this place is always being rented all the time. When there is a big party of people, they're outside of all hours of the night. The cans are always overflowing, not to mention all the people coming and going in all different directions, different cars. I don't live next door to the house, but I can imagine the noise that comes out of there. Also, I want to know, is it legal to have an Airbnb in a residential area? And if it is legal, does the owner need a permit, and does the owner have a permit? When you go to the Airbnb website, you will see that they turned the dining room into a bedroom. Did they get a permit for this? Here are some pictures that I took of the garbage. And I have lived in this block since nineteen seventy-three, and I've seen a lot of long-term rentals, but I've never seen a house rented out like a hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Canapa had a comment.
Yeah, I do, too.
First of all, let me thank Ms. Frankie and Mr. Fel- Felphy, did I get that correct? Felphy. I've heard from various people throughout the city, particularly in the Westlake District and Belford, about the impacts that they're feeling around Airbnb. So I just want to, you know, I think it's something we should look into. I will talk with staff, I'll talk with you, Mr. Mayor. But this seems to be not a problem of just two people mentioning it. It seems to be a problem that we should look into, and so I appreciate both your comments. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'd like to make a comment. Anyone who's running a business out of their home has to have a business license. So we can check right across the hall there to see if they in fact have a business license, and if they don't, they have to get one. Also, there's regulations about garbage. So it sounds like the whole piece of property is not being properly handled. There's, I mean, if they had a good management system, you would never know who was there, because the garbage would be taken out, the place would be clean, they wouldn't be renting it to, you know, seventeen guys having a whatever party. So maybe staff can look into what's happening at that address and...
We will.
See if there's some things we can take care of right now.
We will follow up on it tomorrow. We'll check whether or not they have a business license. We'll find the property owner, and we will send them a letter, and we'll take care of it. We'll look into it. Whether or not we can restrict the use of the house as an Airbnb location remains to be seen. But we certainly can clean it up and make sure that they follow, you know, some procedures that allow for the neighbors adjacent to this particular facility to have peace and harmony. So we can make sure of that. But we will definitely follow up, and I'll report back to the council what we find.
Thank you.
All right. Let me call up Sharon Keenan.
Good evening.
Evening.
Well, it's been over a month now, and I still have no lights. I don't know. We met with Jeff Fernesi, and we had a very good meeting with him. He told us more than we've heard in the four months that our lights have been out. And he said the last meeting he had with PG&E and him had the CPU with CD. Am I saying that right?
The CPUC.
The CPUC there. And we got a very nice letter from the city manager, asking people to please contact them if they have any questions. Now, it boggles my mind that a city as big as we are and as influential as we are cannot get together with PG&E and work together. Jeff said that, well, we'd have electricity by the fifteenth. Well, tomorrow's the fifteenth. I still don't have electricity.
Fifteenth of never.
And the PG&E called and said we would have electricity in five days. Well, five days is long gone by. Nobody knows when anything is happening. So I would like to ask the people to pull out the letter that they got from the city and write these people. And if we get enough griping to it, maybe the state will get together and get it straightened out for us. Because the fog is coming in, the evenings are getting darker, and when you look outside, all you see is a black wall. And it's ridiculous. And we don't, we, you can say we have patrols in that area at night. We don't have patrols in the area at night, because I leave my curtains open, and I would see them going by. But you just don't. So I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I could tell you that when some of this stuff was happening, when you were probably getting upset, you did. I know that Mr. Torres wrote them a scathing letter, basically demanding that they show up, PG&E show up when the council meeting, answer to a lot of the problems that they've been having. And so I know this council is very interested and very active in trying to resolve their problem. We're not just sitting on our hands, so...
Yeah, I was just about to say, Sharon, I had a conversation with Scott Hart, the representative. I'm a little surprised he's not here today. I don't mind telling you that he opined that I was abusive and that I was creating vitriol.
Yeah.
And I told, and he told me that if I wasn't abusive and I didn't create vitriol, that they might actually move the ball a little bit more, to which I responded.
That's so...
Oh, he also told me I was too emotional about it. I don't mind saying this, because it's nothing... I don't mind saying this, because it's nothing that I wouldn't tell him if he was in front of here, so it's no secret. To which I told him, you haven't seen me become emotional yet. And it's too bad that he thinks I'm abusive, because frankly, that's what a government relations person's supposed to do, is take the emotion and the abuse, much like our city manager has to take the abuse when people come up and accuse her of not doing something, or our city clerk of not doing something, or even us. So it's not that we have a lack of desire to fix this. It's not like we don't have a, a skin in the game, if you will, we do. PG&E has seen fit to parcel out their responsibility and hold tight to what they think they need to do, and only what they need to do. I do know they're trying, according to him, they have spent over half a million dollars studying this problem. He couldn't tell me, of course, last Friday, what the half a million dollars has told him so far. That's why I told him to come Monday to explain it to us, but he's not here, so maybe they haven't figured it out yet. But I do know, according to him, they've spent money studying it, they're still studying it, they're trying to figure out what the problem is. Somewhere down the line, he also mentioned that a lot of it is what we need to do, and that residents need to understand that the city has a responsibility too. I think Ms. Martel has explained countless times what our responsibility is and how far we can go, but frankly, it's a collaborative effort. And if PG&E doesn't do their part, we can't finish ours, so that's where we are.
That's why I think that we should start hounding CPUC.
That's a, it's a public forum, I totally agree with you. I think maybe that's where you've got to take the fight, maybe.
And you know, you think about the half a million dollars? If they'd have spent the half a million dollars rewiring that neighborhood,
Yeah.
you'd have lights from now until the end of time.
Yeah.
Outrageous.
I'd like to see some of that.
Well, I, I actually do have an update on the problem, because the, the meeting that Jeff Hornisey told you about, Sharon, was actually a meeting that I requested with PG&E. And because we invited the, one of the government affairs people from the CPUC to join us for that meeting, at the meeting that we had last week, we had every senior executive that PG&E could bring to that meeting. And in addition to that, they also brought in an outside contractor, a third-party contractor that they hired from Cupertino, Cupertino Electric to advise them on the most recent outage that we've been experiencing on, on your particular RO. There has been quite a bit done that was reported upon at that particular meeting, and then at a subsequent meeting that we had last Friday. So we've met twice with PG&E since the last council meeting. They have been troubleshooting in great detail. They took the transformer that has been causing problems on the streetlights, the one that kept going out. They took it back to the manufacturer in Utah. They actually went there, and they arrived back the day that we were, or the day before we were having our meeting to have the manufacturer actually look at the transformer and see what could be contributing to the outages that were occurring each time they put up a brand-new transformer. Without going into a lot of detailed electrical explanation, at the manufacturer, they were not able to find exactly what was wrong with the transformer. But they came back, and they told us, when they met with us, that they were going to use this outside contractor. They were actually going to provide a forensic review of what happened to the transformer. So they saved all the pieces of the transformer that had been damaged and recreated what occurred. And when we met with them last Friday, they were able to tell us in detail about the electrical problem that had occurred that was totally different than they had hypothesized initially. So with a lot of engineering descriptions and detail and explanation that I won't bother everyone with right now, they did conclude what was wrong with that particular transformer. They found out what the problem was, it was not a city problem, because there was a lot of pointing fingers back and forth. However, all of the prior outages that occurred, they did not keep all the components. So they were not able to go back and determine whether or not the same exact thing had happened in the previous outages. All that said, they have guaranteed for me that the target date of September eighteenth, which is this Friday, that they will have the lights on in your particular neighborhood, on your RO. As of Friday, they said they are still on target to meet that, and that the lights would be on. Subsequent to that, over the weekend, we actually had another RO fail, RO four fifty. But in that case, we determined that it's actually on the city's side of the electrical system, not on PG&E. So we're in the process, as of today, we've been trying to get that corrected, because PG&E still wants to do a very extensive test of all of the circuits. They wanted to test the entire loop. And so it does involve having to, you know, conduct some tests along the route of each one of those circuits, which is going to take a little bit of time, but they have scheduled to do that. In light of the failure that we had this weekend, it's going to back it up a couple of days for them to be able to get started and test on it. But they've given me their word that they are still on target for RO three sixty-six in your neighborhood to be relit as of the eighteenth.
He's probably hoping that I stop calling.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ray, Ray Keenan?
Mayor and council members, I know, I'm not trying to be nasty or anything, but what I got to say, everybody's in bed already. The traffic from these schools, especially Westmore High, when I went to high school, I walked maybe two miles to go to high school, including going down J-line tracks and jumping away from the streetcars. There must be hundreds of people, kids, that go to Westmore High that have to be transported by car. Now, that's fine, but what I want, and I know you guys can't do it, but maybe somebody out there can, them people can listen, that if we're coming out of the driveway, please stop and let us get out of the driveway. Sharon and I have to get out in the street at least three times a week and put our hands out to stop the damn cars, pardon me, but that's the way it is. And I think this is absolutely ridiculous. These people are, don't care, that one second or ten seconds means so much to them that they can't stop. Now, two years ago, my wife, I mean, my daughter pulled out of the driveway, and she got hit. And the insurance company says, oh, it's your fault, because you can't, it isn't that, because these guys race up there, race down on both sides, and they will not stop for anybody. The police are never there, they, I don't know where the devil the police go, but they're never on, around Westmore High School. We keep our drapes open, like my wife says, and I have, since Pat Martel said we would have police patrol, thank God, nothing has happened so far. But somebody is going to get raped or hit by cars or something, especially now that it's getting darker. We came home from Padlou the other night at nine-thirty at night. It was black out there, forget that. It was black out there. And it bothers me, because my daughter goes bowling on three nights a week. She's got to come home at ten-thirty, or nine-thirty, or ten-thirty at night. Thank God, she can pull right into the garage, but a lot of people can't. And somebody's going to get hurt, or somebody's going to get something, I don't know. And I'm afraid you guys, whoever's charging, pass, they're going to be, lights are going to be on. That's fine, but I'll see it when I believe it.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay.
Dana?
I talked earlier about equal treatment and equal protection, and it dawned on me with several of the speakers tonight, who exceeded their two-minute time allotment. It reminded me of some recent history. I can't tell you how many times I've been telling you something that you didn't want to hear. It was my public right to speak, and I was cut off at the two-minute mark. It seems to me, I like, I'd like to congratulate our city manager on her accomplishment, but still, you know, that was a nice speech he gave, but still, you know, it was complimenting you. And I can't tell you how many times, when your friends in the last ten years that I've been coming to the council, when friends of the council were complimenting the council members, they went on and on, the thing beeped, no problem. I came up, or people in my neighborhood came up, you didn't want to hear what we were saying. That two-minute was enforced like, matter of fact, our city clerk here came up to speak as a private citizen when you, when the previous council cut her salary by half, which was a pretty major issue, something very emotional for her and for a lot of people. And you, you called the police to escort her off the dais. So I just thought I'd give you a little recent history lesson and say, you know, equal treatment, equal protection. And although Ray is my friend, and so is the gentleman who spoke before, but that isn't fair, that isn't right. And, and if I was saying something that you really, matter of fact, I'm surprised you're not having the police, you know, grab my, you know, turn my hand behind my back and, and knock me off the podium like you tried to do my sister. That's it.
Okay, those are all the speaker cards I have, let me go on to appointments, any appointments?
Oh, wait, 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 wait a minute. Jack Pastor has been my, on the recreation. He and I met recently, and he has agreed to stay on temporarily. And we're going to be trying to find a young person. What he told me is he came, he was on that commission as a very young person himself. And he was coaching, and he says, now it's time to pass it on to the next generation. So we'll be keeping him there until we can find someone.
Okay. Council committee reports, any council committee reports? No one? Okay, city council reports?
Yes.
Go ahead.
At the last meeting, we, we had a gentleman talk about smoking in condominium. Is anyone doing anything about that, or checking it out, or? Because remember, we had said we would investigate, so I'm just bringing that up. Also, there was a discussion about the sea, seawater rising, and at the five-foot mark, and at the fifteen-foot mark, and we said, you know, it would be really kind of important for us to know how much of the, our town would be underwater at the five-foot mark, and how much would be devastated at the fifteen-foot mark. So that will definitely inform our ability to plan for the future. We need to see those lines on a map. And I don't know if that's coming soon, or?
Are you having to put that on a study session?
We certainly, well, I wasn't really planning to, but
I don't think it's something to study, you think?
I mean, it was part of the grand jury report that I provided at the last council meeting. I did, in fact, investigate, because the question was raised about where our wastewater plant is situated relative to sea level, and it is fifty-five feet above sea level. So with the anticipated rise, our wastewater facility would not be affected. Nor would our, just barely would the outfall at Fort Funston with the amount of sea level rise that they anticipate. So that being the case, my guess would be that in most locations around the city, that homes would not be directly affected, not like they would on the bay. On the bay side, for, for communities that have housing on, on the bay side.
But will be reassuring for our community members to know that.
But we will keep you updated, because there is going to be a sea lo, sea level rise group that's going to be forming in the county, and so we'll obviously be participants in that. So we will keep the county, the council apprised about what's going on throughout the county.
I would also like to comment on Dana Smith's comments. There is, it's been at least eleven or twelve years that there has been inequality in how people are treated at the podium. Two thousand twelve, I was giving my preliminary speech to swear in the city clerk. You, Mayor, banged the gavel, sicced the cops on me, and you all got up and left. That was not equal protection under the law, it was not. I was not treated as other people have. In the past, Pat Martel spoke for two and a half minutes introducing someone. So it wasn't a time thing, I only spoke for thirty-one seconds. And I think it's very difficult, when you're in a position of power, to remember that you're really not all that, none of us up here are, and that we have to treat everybody, whether we agree with them or not, whether we like them or not, the same. That's what makes America such a special place, is we treat everyone the same. So I just want you to hold that thought in the back of your mind, and thank you.
Okay, any other city council reports?
Yes, Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition had a Vision Zero event that I attended in Palo Alto. And there were some really interesting comments that were made by the San Mateo County Department of Health regarding pedestrian and bicycle safety in the North County. And I believe they're going to be making a presentation to us regarding Vision Zero. Vision Zero stands for this idea that we should envision the future that doesn't have any pedestrian or bicycle accidents. So that is their, their goal, and that's what they're going to be coming to Daly City, hopefully, to get us to adopt something akin to what we did for smoking, and that is, hopefully, a bundle of legislation that will, will be forward-looking in its, in its scope. So hopefully, we'll, November, Pat?
Yes, November, November ninth.
Great.
All right, any other city council reports? Or I have a staff report?
None this evening.
All right, we've reached the adjournment, let's adjourn in memory of Rizalino Madamo, who is very involved with the Daly City Dolphins. His daughter who's a Daly City Dolphins, and the entire team is mourning the loss of him. He's a very special man. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
In favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.